This time we'll call the Tuesday, May third, twenty twenty-two Board of Supervisors meeting. Mary McDevitt, Mike Sinus, and myself, Jack Bowie are your supervisors. We have Lisa Smith and Bjorn Beck from the Auditor's Office and Moyn Goke, our Administrator Assistant. First item on the agenda this morning is the opening of the bids for the Pearson Hall re-roofing project. And Lisa will deal with that.
Yeah, so we did receive four bids, all bid due by four o'clock on Friday afternoon. We received four bids and we have to do a bid sheet, so sorry about that. The first bid this morning is from Economy Roofing. Economy Roofing is out of Bettendorf, Iowa. Their net bid is two hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
Did we have in the specs that we had the option of heavier material? I didn't know we did.
We did.
Yeah, no, but that wasn't on there.
Twenty fifteen year or twenty?
So what they put on the bid here is provide all labor material required for the installation of the PVC roofing system over the existing metal roof system at Pearson Hall. All work can be performed per the RFP issued by the county. Our proposed system would be Firestone and incorporate a fifty mil thick memory.
I think that was the minimum.
So this is from T and K Roofing out of Bailey, Iowa. So of course, you know, they've got quite a bit in their bid here, but their net price is three hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. And they also have a bid supplemental documents, so. This has nothing to do, it looks like, this looks like all references and such, and there's nothing to do with.
The bid?
The bid. There's nothing to do with the, with the price of the bid. Third bid is from Beckwith Commercial Roofing out of Clinton. So the base bid for the entire building, which is approximately thirty-five thousand square feet, is two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars. Provide, and so the additional alternate line item is to provide and install a fifty milliliter Duralast roof system with twenty-year manufacturer's warranty, which is for an additional ten thousand dollars to the base bid. They also did include a bid for new gutters and downspouts for twenty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Six hundred.
Six hundred and twenty-seven. And they do have a note here, due to market volatility, all provided pricing and dates are merely estimates based on the information available to us at the time given and remain subject to change unless and until manufacturers firms them. That's.
Put money down.
The last bid is from Jim Casey Commercial Roofing. It does talk about a loose layer of fifty milliliter PVC. Just talk about a fifteen-year manufacturer's warranty. Their base bid is for three hundred and twenty thousand, ninety dollars. And if you would like, if, if you would like, they would also include in their bid as an alternate to provide and install eighty feet of manufacturer's snow guard for an additional eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. And that concludes the bids for the Pearson Center.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to open the bids for the concrete work for the enforcement utility.
We did receive two bids for what, the first one here is from County Line Concrete. County Line Concrete, their net bid is for twenty-four thousand, three hundred dollars. The second bid is from B and T Concrete from Bellevue. And their bid is for twenty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. And Larry, I said it's probably one of the.
Thanks, Lisa. We're going to have the swearing in before we have David. David's not here, huh? Well, I think he was probably going to have a press to come.
Your mail order, right by your left foot.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This time we're joined by Sheriff Russ Davis. What is your name again?
Well, good morning, everyone. I'm here for actually a couple personnel matters. First one I want to mention is Terry Rowling is retiring today is actually his last day. He will have some cake and stuff from like eleven to noon down in the conference room in the basement that everybody's welcome to attend to. And I just, I'd like to put a word about the form, he's going to try to stop in and say goodbye to you guys. I know he's not on the agenda, but he's going to try to stop towards the end.
We will let him.
Let you know, so I don't think he wants to be on camera real bad, but.
That's just life.
Yep, yep, I told him it'd be better if he was. So I'd just like to put out there, he's given us a good twenty-five years here at Jackson County. He was our civil deputy, which is a big important position here in the office. With the civil position comes a lot of liability. He is viewed as a subject matter expert throughout the state. In years past, he was asked to be a member of the, they called the Civil Book Committee, the ones that kind of set the Bible for the Civil Code throughout Iowa. And he wasn't allowed to do that until I became sheriff and I could tell that around the state, they really wanted him to do it because of his expertise, so I allowed him to do it. This year, he took our new civil deputy, Corey Keppel, to the conference to act as his mentor and introduce him to all the people that he's going to need to glean knowledge from. And just get him introduced and getting networking with those people that are going to help him. And Terry was also an instructor at the civil school this year because of his expertise, so just want to plug in for him. So he will be stopping in later, I'm assuming. So today I'm here actually to ask the board's permission to approve a certificate of appointment for Dan Lake to become our newest Deputy Sheriff here on the department. And I will read a little bit about Dan here. He's the new sheriff's deputy, obviously, for Jackson County. He was born and raised in Dubuque, his parents are Jeff and Ann, and he also has a brother, Rob. He graduated from the University of Dubuque with majors in criminology and environmental science. Dan has over seven years of law enforcement experience as a park ranger for Dubuque County Conservation and was a certified firearms instructor for them. He is pursuing his passion to be more active in a law enforcement capacity by protecting others and serving the Jackson County community. Dan's been married to his wife Tiffany Till for over seven years. She's in attendance, together they have a five-year-old daughter Madeline and three-year-old son Thomas who keep them very busy. Tiffany is the daughter of Karen and Alan Till, who not only have deep farming roots in our community, but are also prominent forage leaders for the youth of our community. Karen and Alan have another daughter Tina, who's also in attendance with their husband Bill Coakley, who is one of our local attorneys here in town. And Bill also used to be a local police officer, so he's not a stranger or law enforcement leader. In his free time, Dan loves to be outdoors, enjoying fishing, hunting, and football. So with that, I'll present you guys the certificate of appointment, but that's your sign.
We need a motion.
Yes.
Allowing me to sign it.
Yeah, I'd make that motion.
I would second.
A motion and a second to appoint Daniel Blake as a deputy sheriff and authorize the chair to sign his employment. All those in favor? Okay, then you have some official stuff to do, right?
Yep, so the first thing I always do is I read this out loud to my new deputies, Dan, just so you hear this. It's more for you and it's for the community to hear as well. It's about the sheriff's office, the first of two important characters, characteristics that distinguish the office of sheriff from other law enforcement units because its historical roots. In England, the sheriff came into existence around the ninth century. This makes the sheriff the oldest continuing non-military law enforcement entity in history. The elected sheriff is part of America's democratic fabric. It's more than a tradition, it's a constitutional requirement. The second characteristic that sets the sheriff's office apart from other law enforcement agencies is its direct accountability to the citizens through the election of the sheriff. The office of sheriff is not a department or county government, it is the independent office through which the sheriff exercises the powers of the public trust. No individual or small group hires or fires the sheriff or has the authority to interfere with the operation of the office. Elected sheriffs are accountable to the Constitution of their state, the United States Constitution, statutes, and the citizens of their county. The sheriff should naturally do his best to work with all entities because it is important in a democratic society. Sheriff must work with all segments of government to serve and protect the citizens of the county. Preservation of the office of sheriff is vital in our republic. Outside of you elected town marshals, the sheriff is the only head of law enforcement agency in this nation that is accountable directly to the people of his or her jurisdiction. Each of us as sheriff can do our part to ensure a contribution to the preservation of this great office by following these principles. Remember those sheriffs who have served in our counties and across the nation before us? Build on their successes by learning from their mistakes. Always serve with integrity. Do not shirk the sheriff's responsibilities, duties, or management rights to other governmental entities, unions, or political influence. The sheriff alone stands directly accountable to citizens for quality of service from the sheriff's office. No one fulfills the sheriff's moral and statutory responsibilities. Not a mere formality, an oath of office is a public pledge that the official understands the requirements of the position and will work to meet or exceed those requirements. Those taking the oath must fully consider the meaning of the oath and all its important implications. This is why the oath to sheriff's office is so important to me. By deputizing someone, I'm entrusting they will not abuse their powers and follow my intentions. We are entrusted by the public to do what is right, moral, ethical, and legal. We must set and lead by example in our community, both on and off duty, to ensure we never lose the public's faith and trust in us. To be disloyal to this oath is perjury, it means you not only have been disloyal to the sheriff's office, but more importantly, to your people. Never dishonor your sources or the principles of this office. And now we'll have you go up and stand your flag up there.
We reconvene. This time we'll reconvene and we're joined by David Dryer, our Jackson County engineer. Morning, David.
Morning.
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 First item is an interest premise for Zachary Beckley in Perry Township, Section nine on one hundred and eightieth Street. A classy farm entrance on the south side of the road. I believe.
A motion and a second to approve Zachary Beckley's farm entrance on one hundred and eighty street, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, carry.
And we have the final voucher of materials for the Z twenty project. Resurfacing of Z twenty from E twenty-three Y north, three point five miles from I dot, so then we'll close out this account, they've done their final punch list and some billing out there to improve the ride ability. So we're good to go with that, so the original contract price was one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fourteen cents with some additional materials, shoulder rock, pavement patching, and additional asphalt increase of one hundred and nine thousand, six hundred and four for a total project cost of one million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and so we need approval to, to the board to sign that and send that to.
Is that from sixty-four down to the county line, Clinton? Is that the one?
That's the one from right hill north.
Right, look, all up to the, yeah, toward the township, yes.
Do we have any intersecting railroads that we put? Yeah. Okay, make motion to approve.
I would second. A motion and a second to approve the final voucher, all those in favor? Aye, aye, motion carry.
And then the only other item I have is request approval to send out fuel bits for next year.
That ought to be interesting.
Yeah.
This is sure.
Actually, yeah, I'd like a motion to send out the request for bits.
A motion and a second to approve sending out the request for bids for fuel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Update on the seventeen. The interlayer has been laid yesterday, it's been
Both sides?
For weather.
Yeah.
Not all the way, but they're making progress. They still think they'll be finished up by mid-May and then they will finish up codfish. But they're, they're working trying to get in as much as they can during the rain.
So is there one lane open then all the time yet, or are they flagging, yeah? Okay, I called the other day and I said, I thought there was one lane, they said there was.
Well, when they're working, they'll have a pilot car in operation, otherwise it should be.
I think everybody that lives out there will want a ribbon cutting.
I'm sure.
Been a long time, Tim.
Yes, it has.
Their patience.
So codfish howl, they've started having their shows out there again. And Clark used to keep a list of when they were having a show so they can make sure to get the road, because they throw in, you know, four or five hundred cars in there a weekend.
I didn't know that.
Okay, it was good last, last Saturday night. Okay. And I don't know if it's going to get tore up as bad because they're not using the tractor anymore, they're using the school.
Do they have other events listed on their website?
Yes.
Okay. I will.
On a Saturday night.
I will.
Is there a rotation date as far as grading or a certain timeframe in between them or just as needed or?
It's kind of based on their experience and what a road is doing and what it's carrying. Some of the roads, for example, that service the waste transfer site. You know, the Bellevue trucks, Bellevue trucks run on it, so they're hitting that one a little more often. So the crews know.
Yeah.
What are their problematic roads and try to, to keep on top of them and which ones have special events and things, do you want to hit them after the rains? Or moldable?
I know at one time I think somebody gave you a timeframe as to do like each, each building or each section, each
Yeah.
shop has about sixty, sixty-five row, gravel row, miles of gravel rows, and it takes about four to five days to cover that six mile.
Yeah.
So be patient, everyone.
It's a big David.
Worked that's to bring that garbage in there, those bridges up to where they're supposed to be.
This time we'll go to citizens and visitors and we have Representative Steve Bradley with us.
Yeah, I'm here as a private citizen, I was here to support Sheriff Kilburg and Deputy Blake, I think he's a good addition to our police force here to the sheriff's department too. And I can't wait for the new sheriff's department. I think we're going to break that ground next week.
I haven't been told.
I, I heard next week or the week after that, depending on the weather, so.
I know next week they're breaking down for the Together We Build. I haven't heard whether.
That was fifteenth. Six, Monday, sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, I was over in the sheriff's department with Sheriff Kilburg, I can't wait for that place, for them to move out.
Neither can we.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a good place.
Did you get a tour of the jail?
Oh, I, I have, I have been through that a couple of times. And I just, I'm appalled that that's still going into, so anyway, I appreciate you guys. I thought I stopped by, it's one of the first Tuesdays I've had in three years that I've had opens, so, because I'm so some legislature and always practicing dentistry, so. Tuesday, so. You guys have any questions for me, I can take some, but otherwise I just appreciate you guys having me here and I hope, I can't wait for spring to come.
Are you still in session then, or you're going overtime, you're working a little overtime here?
Yeah, I'm getting paid overtime.
On what?
Just like we did. So no, we're still in session. I think the Senate is still meeting today, yesterday, today, and we'll see whether they're coming. And we're trying to work out the bills between the Senate and the House and then everything goes down to the governor, so hopefully that'll get worked out within the next. They're saying maybe within the next couple of weeks, I mean, we may be here till the end of, end of May, but I hope, I hope we can get things done.
A lot of business take care of.
Yeah.
I guess one of our concerns is that overweight bill.
I, I agree with you. Yeah, so, yeah, that ninety thousand pounds for the sheriff, a lot of, a lot of roads.
Roads and bridges.
Certainly will.
We had one bridge go down two years ago that collapsed, it wasn't even on our list. And that was five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, so I mean, that little bit of permit money, this is a checklist, I mean, it's not.
And you guys know how many bridges we have here in Jackson County?
Oh, yeah.
The highest number of bridges, because, because of the rivers that we have. It's a beautiful county, I mean, there's no other county I think that's prettier than Jackson County, especially with the rolling hills in there. Consequently, we have a lot of bridges.
And then we do.
Yeah. I appreciate what you guys do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And vice versa, so likewise.
Okay.
Keep up the good work and.
Okay, I'm going to step out, I appreciate you guys, let me, let me just say. Okay.
Next item on our agenda is Becky Chatham, our human resource administrator. Good morning, Becky.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, everybody.
Good.
Okay. Bring nicer weather though.
Oh, when, when, I don't know when. Saturday. That's what they say this morning, we'll see.
Looks better by Saturday.
Well, that's what they say, but I guess I will see. So I am here today. Over the past couple of weeks, we advertised and wrapped up the interviews for the zoning administrator position. An offer of employment was made to a candidate and that candidate has accepted the offer. So I am here today to make the hiring of a planning and zoning administrator official. So unless there's further discussion to be had on that, I would ask for a motion to hire Lori Rowling as the planning and zoning administrator effective May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, at a starting salary of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars, and that would include other benefits as negotiated.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I would second.
A motion and a second to approve the hiring of Lori Rowling as the new zoning administrator. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
And I certainly appreciate ECI is willing to stop us through this transition again, so Laura has been here, she's actually put in a lot of time here that was unanticipated. She's very much keeping things in order and keeping the permit process going and keeping things organized to hand off to Lori when she gets here, so. We certainly appreciate their help and certainly Laura, she's, she's had to put a lot of time into this time around, so certainly want to give her a shout out, a big thank you, so she'll be back in again this afternoon, she's going to be meeting with some of the public and making appointments and all that kind of good stuff too, to keep the process moving, so we certainly appreciate that.
Aye.
Yeah. And the next thing I have is a couple of nuisances that have been filed during the absence of a zoning administrator. I did send out, you know, out pictures last night, late yesterday afternoon, if you had a chance to see those. The process by our ordinance is that if anybody is in violation of the ordinance, they get provided a notice of the violation with thirty days to, thirty-one days to abate the nuisance or to request reconsideration of the board of supervisors. So I just wanted to bring you all to see that there's three notices that will go out certified mail today as required to each of those property owners. If by chance they reach out for reconsideration, they would do that probably through the zoning officer to the board director or directly, so just be aware of that. And then it'll be up to the new zoning administrator to continue with the enforcement or the, to assist through the rest of that process, so. Those will go out in the mail today, unless you have any questions, we did have Mike go out and take pictures just to verify the nuisances based on the complaints that were filed, so he was able to get pictures of the properties. They were hiding the nuisance to exist, so they'll get a notice here in the next couple of days in the mail and we'll go from there.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, that's all I have, must he have anything for me?
Thanks for all your efforts.
All right, you're welcome, thank you.
So we're giving out the RFP for new GIS.
We haven't made a decision.
Yeah, I think we, that's probably a work session, I think we need to have a work session.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure where that was.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. It's your turn now.
This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in official newspapers.
The vote.
Second, a motion and a second to approve the publication of our previous meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
Motion needed to approve and authorize a handwritten, handwritten warrant for Quoddy and Finance for postage of four thousand and eighty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents due to an incorrect baking ACH information and for Julia Fern for airfare of nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents for graduate Coalition Academy training for two people.
Motion to approve.
Is there a small explanation that can go with the, with the incorrect banking information as it comes?
Quoddy and has two different accounts. So we were ACH, which means that we electronically send our money, we were sending the money to this account and then they had to transfer it to this account. And when it transfers to this account, it, it makes it that the account that becomes delinquent. So we were getting charges, so we had to stop the ACH to this account, but if we wouldn't have done a handwritten warrant, then we would have incurred late charges. So we're going to do a handwritten warrant to stop this account, to start this account. Yeah, that's what Quoddy and, yes, that is our postage meter, yes.
And the Julie Fern airfare is a pass through basically from the drug man to that.
That is correct. Yep.
I would second.
The motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carry.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting.
The vote.
Motion and a second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pushing carries.
Motion needed to accept, place on file and authorize the chair's signature on the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of April twenty twenty-two in the amount of sixty-two thousand, forty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor?
All right.
Aye, motion carry.
So the next is, I gave you copies of Resolution eight ninety-two, and this is a yearly. Well, I guess usually. Usually it's yearly, the federal government is a little bit behind, but this is money that we receive from the federal government for land that is a non-taxable area. So the Bellevue Community School District, we received ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and one cent of that as we disperse out. Bellevue Community School District receives thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars, forty-five cents. The Easton Valley Community School District receives thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-five cents. Our Jackson County Secondary Roads Department receives twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. The Bellevue Fire Department, which is part of the town of Bellevue, receives four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty cents. Sebelah Fire Department, which is also in the town of Sebelah, for two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars, sixty-five cents. And the Miles Benefit Tire District of two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. So in lieu of, in lieu of taxes is what we're talking about. So with that, I would need a motion today to approve Resolution number eight ninety-two dash zero five dash zero three dash twenty twenty-two to disperse. So with that, I would need a motion today to approve Resolution number eight ninety-two dash zero five dash zero three dash twenty twenty-two to disperse. Ninety-nine thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and one cent in federal flood control revenues. Collected from leased property along the Mississippi River as recorded in Resolution Book Five.
So where does the one penny come in?
That's what the federal government gives us.
So they have a. They have a. They have a.
So we're on the penny.
We're off a penny.
Oh. Okay. I'll take that penny off.
But it was safe.
Then we for all your work, you get a penny, right?
Yeah, yeah. I need a motion on that.
Turn that in, y'all.
I can uh correct that when we before I have Mary scan it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, yes, please.
I would second it and I would second.
Motion and a second to approve the. Resolution as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
Do you have the original?
Yeah. Um, this is why I asked Shelley to come over. The next item on my agenda is a motion to approve and adopt the county ordinance under three oh two. Which is re-adopting the existing county code of ordinances. Um, this is a process that we've been working on. I would hate to tell you how long we've been working on this, but by code of Iowa, this needs to be done every five years. And so Shelley um has worked with ECIA, Marla Quinn at ECIA. And when Christina was here, she also worked with her and the three of them. Came up to codify to get to this point today to codify our ordinances. If you approve it today and going forward. All ordinances that are passed. Will be. I'm not really sure of the correct word. Anyway, Sarah, Davenport County Attorney Sarah Davenport and her office assistant Jess. Will be taking all of this information and we're going to be on a every ordinance basis. We're gonna be somewhat updating our code of ordinances. And hopefully in twenty twenty-five. We're gonna get back on a rotating schedule. We wanna go twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five and so on. But in by code, it says we have to do this every five years. We're just trying to get this caught up. And I believe in looking for the little that I've looked at it. Um, I believe that we will be also having to repeal some of the ordinances that we have. Some are no longer relevant. And so I believe that as Sarah will take this information and review it, she already has, but I know that. There are some that will need to be repealed. There will be others that will need to be corrected. So today is just a baseline to get us back into compliance. And and then we'll come back with more changes.
Well, certainly as time goes on, things change and need to be updated and.
Sure.
Need to be either deleted or uh you know, removed, as you say it. Um, that's that's obvious that we have to change with with the times and. We shouldn't wanna keep moving forward and I hopefully we can. Get it so that it's easy accessible for everyone.
We will have a copy in the auditor's office. A copy will also be made available in the clerk of court's office. And a copy also goes to Sarah. So, yeah.
I would make a motion to approve Jackson County ordinance three oh two as presented.
A motion and a second to approve the ordinance as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I motion carry.
And in trying to get caught up. Um, today I would need a motion to approve Resolution number eight ninety-three dash zero five dash zero three dash twenty twenty-two. To approve destroying records from the offices of the auditor, Human Resources Administrator, Mental Health and Case Management Director, and Protective Payee. I can tell you that. I'm gonna underestimate, but I can tell you that there's probably sixty boxes in the old conservation room that we call the auditor's area. I probably have sixty boxes of election records that need to be destroyed. I can't just. Put them in the recycling bin. They need to be confidentially shredded. Um, so that's one of the things that we're trying to do. We do have to hold because of federal elections. We do have to hold that information for twenty-two months. So um, that's just a project that. We're gonna get started. We have another bigger project that we're gonna start also, but we need to at least get this stuff done so we can start our other project.
It's a room to move.
Yeah.
So those sixty boxes, how many years does that come back? This hasn't been for a while.
Actually, you know.
Some of it here is two thousand thirteen.
Yeah. I mean, election, so we've got, so we, and that's why I had Shelley go down yesterday. Maybe you can speak more to that than I can.
Um, I believe that it was. Two thousand and. Four, what I could see. There were some local elections from nineteen ninety-nine. That I I'm assuming we're in the pile, but I was not gonna go down to the fourth row back of boxes and down in the bottom. So. I think it's. Local elections back to ninety-nine, but federal elections back to two thousand four or five.
But there's no legal reason for us to retain this stuff. We need to clean house and other areas also.
We're gonna call a company that's gonna come here.
Yeah.
And we're just gonna on-site shred.
I know Dickmer had did some of that for us, yeah.
That's who we're gonna call. I had already reached out to them, but they need more of an approximate box count of what I can get them. So, you know, we have claims. We have election staff. There's some protective payee. We spent some time yesterday trying to decide when protective payee started, when protective payee ended here in Jackson County. We have all of those records. They definitely need to be confidentially shredded. So that's why we're gonna bring the and mental health records also. So. We're gonna bring the truck here and we can watch it shred. So there's no issue of it's something, you know. So.
And then cover the parking lot with shredding paper?
Oh, I think we could probably do it.
I would without a doubt.
Several layers.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we talked about too, is trying to get for some kind of digitizing system so we can all get together and have this done and.
I I think that when it comes to the digitizing, I think that we probably either need to have reporter Arlene Shaw come in and and discuss that with you. Um, I know that she's reached out to a company. I know that she has. A quote, but that does not include any other office at this point.
Okay, well, we need to have department is involved in such a thing.
Well, I did visit. I have been doing some visiting. I did visit with a couple of departments and I think we can kind of move forward to what we wanna see. Um, it's a slow process, but I think you just need to get it started. And I did hear some conversation in the hallway. Escapes me now who it was. Um, between two people that. They would like to see. Scanning done. But everyone have access to it. So like on the solutions visions, vision system. That way, whi- whichever office needs that type of information, they have it.
They can get it.
Well, we can certainly see that three offices are connected or four offices actually are all connected and they could go to one spot and find this. I've heard we overlap several times on things and it just makes a tremendous amount of extra work for people and. We need to. Step forward with the new technology that we can utilize.
I I think with new personnel and new technology and I think. As I say, it's a lightbulb moment. Um, I had one of those last Thursday, matter of factly. And um, we're working on trying to correct something that is not correct here in Jackson County. I had a lightbulb moment and I. I spent two days working on it. So hopefully then when our new zoning administrator starts in a couple of weeks, that we'll have a good product for her to look at. And um, it's a little labor intensive, but we're gonna, we've committed to it. We're gonna get it accomplished.
Sounds good.
Did we take any action on this yet? I lost my concentration there.
No, we did not.
I would move to approve Resolution uh. As presented.
A motion and a second to approve Resolution. Resolution eight nine three dash zero five dash zero three dash twenty twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
I motion carry.
That's all that I have for the board today. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, thanks, Shelley. Next up is me invoking our administrative assistant.
Morning.
Good morning. Is that a long morning already? Got a lot going on today. Okay, calendar for this week. Where's today? Uh, from eleven to twelve downstairs is the Retirement Social Committee rolling. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May fourth, at nine AM is a RTA meeting for all of you in Dubuque. I mean, it's also a Zoom option for that. If you want to.
Yeah, I have a medical appointment at ten in Bellevue, so I'll probably zoom in. I can holler in there, Sharon, and let her know that. I'll be there for the start anyway. I'm sure you'll have a quorum.
And they got a nice setup there too with their.
Yeah, they do. I mean, it works big. Anybody, I like to, I like to drive too, but I. I'm not gonna turn down the appointment when I can get one.
That's true.
Um, also Wednesday night at six PM is an E nine one one service board meeting for Mike. Thursday, May fifth, from nine AM to four PM is the Vera French Conference in Vettendorf for Jack. At eleven o'clock in the morning is a tag meeting by Zoom for Mike. And at five PM on Thursday is the Isaac's Project of year-end wrap-up for everybody over at the brewery.
It actually starts at four, doesn't it, on Sunday?
I think they'll let you anytime you wanna go. I thought I don't think the. Presentation is till a little bit later than then.
Okay.
You have an invitation in your binder.
Do you have anything on that?
Yes, the I I S C.
Yes, yeah.
So there are presentations at three and at four in various locations.
Okay.
The brewery is at five.
Also.
The rats.
That's the wrap-up part.
But if you wanna go to any of the presentations, you'll need to. I don't have the agenda with me here, but.
I've got that some. Okay, I'm trying to figure out which ones I can get to. Hopefully I can make friends.
Well, I mean. At most, you're gonna get to listen to two presentations, but we're recording, so if you. There's something you wanna learn about, we can make sure you get that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, the next regular meeting will be Tuesday, May tenth at nine AM. And then after that, four o'clock is a McHucka River Watershed Management Authority Executive Meeting by Zoom for Larry. Uh, for business today, Kerry Rowling has always done the recruitment for the eminent domain commission. You see Cory, Cory will know we're taking with it. Cory Kevin will be doing that for us. Um, but he did find a replacement um that we needed on the eminent domain commission and. That would be Bailey Clough. Um, in the real, in the realtor category. For a term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So looking for a motion to approve that appointment.
I will actually abstain, Jack, if that's okay.
I will second. All those in favor of appointing Bailey Clough to the eminent domain commissions? I. I. Abstaining.
I will abstain this.
Motion carry.
Right. That's it. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Anything, David, you wanna share with us before Dave, before Josh gets here?
I was really just gonna sit in on that conversation, but.
Okay. We can recess until we're joined by Josh.
I just give a quick report on the nine one one. I'm thinking of it here. I just got an email from last week here. Where we are proceeding with the purchase of our radios. Um, so just just for the record, um, we worked out a contract with Motorola. Um, we felt that was our best option going forward. So the the county will be buying new seven forty-five new portable. Uh, APX eight thousand radios, twenty-seven them are portables, hand, of course, body on your body. Twenty-seven mobile, um, APX eighty-five hundreds in cars and twenty-seven in-car repeaters. So, um, we did have a little right at a hundred thousand dollar grant money that we got. Allocated to the county for some of the purchase of them, so. Um, I guess it nine one one will be at this phase of nine one one implementing the new. System will have three hundred twenty-eight thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fourteen cents in the purchase of them radios. So that was. The contract that we signed going forward, we have a couple of things to talk about. In the contract for tomorrow's meeting, but. That's just an update on where we're at, so. And if they have communication.
Anything you wanna talk about the RPA meeting?
How about the Hivers? I didn't get they said that I don't that one that is they is.
Well, I got confused on some of that and why the small city funding? I thought we had a limit of twenty-five thousand. They can manage to put in, no, whatever town that was a little more maybe. Put in a request for two hundred and fifty thousand.
That has nothing to do with the with the swap, are they?
No. But it was coming out of that account, wasn't it?
No.
Oh, okay, then I was.
No.
There's so much going on there. It's like.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that part of your I was important, right, or what? No. Oh, the RPA, yeah, no, no, the seventy-five thousand swap, but just internal here as far as. Yeah. Small city swap funding in Jackson County. That's just for Jackson County.
Iris, they keep saying they're working on the.
I'd like to hear an update on the on Spurs Creek, of course, but I I didn't get a chance to sit in on it again last week, but you had the meeting.
Same old, same old.
Yeah, I know they were trying to get the attorneys to finalize the contracts and and the. Right of ways, I guess, if that's what you wanna call it and. How they're gonna implement a large scale meeting to get everyone together.
They brought up having another meeting in Bellevue. I don't know how much more we can express. I mean, you still have some that are. Got their feet in the sands. I don't know. I don't know how you deal with some of that, but.
Well, I think, yeah, I don't know. I I guess as a larger group, I think you need to move forward and I mean, if you're gonna go knocking on doors, that's gonna be a long process. I think you need to have a public meeting and. But that's just me, I guess. I mean, I know they talked about having a large public meeting, getting everybody landowners. And I know that some of them landowners, of course, are coming back from down south yet, you know, so.
Yeah, I think the big meetings. A good idea just to get. I don't know, get people where.
Well, to get the majority and then knock on a few doors if you have to. I I mean, do you have to have per hundred percent compliant or can you move ahead with majority or how how does that go?
When we actually get into that Spurs Creek part, because there's, it's all private property. There's no easements through that. That's that part. They originally said it up there. Never would have thought that this was gonna happen. But hopefully there's money to reuse the streets and stuff too, which would be an incentive. I mean, incentive should be the property is not worth the hell a lot if you can't sell.
Well, there's some properties that you can't. You you don't be able to. Transfer if they can't, don't have water or shore.
That's right. The long haul. We will recess.
At this time, we reconvene the meeting and we're joined by Josh Holt, City Manager, and. Our first visit from Mayor Tom Messerly this term. The more. More David Hires also here this.
This term, so.
So we're at your just.
At your pleasure. Yeah, well, thanks for having us and. Um, thanks for. Well, I guess this was originally your thing and we have something to offer here to help push things along in a good way. Uh, and objectively, you know, through some conversations we've had together with people that we know are applying to this, it seems to me, or at least in my opinion. Uh, the earlier we are, the more competitive we'll be. And Mr. Higher would always say it's good to have a plan and. You guys have had a plan for a long time. I shall already plan. And I think that converging a few pieces here. Isn't too hard to do. It will take probably um some time. I've taken a look at the Word doc that's required of this current application and. Uh, I'm confident in our ability to to complete that in a timely manner. Um, as all marriage conversations go, um, do you start with budget or you start with vision? And I think that's the point of this meeting. Is to establish where we wanna set our way in the sort of application. If awarded, then this. If not, then this. So. Um, I don't know your debt structure. I I don't know what you have going on for. Um, I don't know your debt structure, I, I don't know what you have going on for finances, I don't know what your constituents.
The jail.
The jail?
Yes, otherwise, that's the first time in the thirty two years I've been on the board, we've had it.
That's, that's. That's why I did call Heidi yesterday, and she said we are good. Yeah. And they get to wherever we go.
I guess we should point out that we're talking about Prairie Creek.
That is correct, yeah.
Might wonder what we're talking about, but we are talking about the Prairie Creek uh facility and what we might do to enhance it.
Um, I did get a call back from Elena Santizo, one of the grant managers yesterday afternoon. Uh, they will not consider a land donation. Um, a local match, so that, that is known. Um, it's not great news, but it kind of, I think we kinda suspected that it was a donation some years ago. I know it's things, so, uh, she's still excited about the prospect of this being a big highlight for our area. And seeing where we go from there. Um. From our end, uh, as I've described, we're financing our wastewater treatment plant facility. Most likely through the state's revolving loan fund. And I say most likely because we right now are applying for disadvantaged community status. That was prepared by our engineering and design firm. Um, that's based on median household income compared to sewer receipts every year. And you need to score at least twelve points on a twenty point scale. To be considered that, we have fourteen, which is good. Uh, I've been trying to push around an absolute certification before coming into this conversation, hasn't happened. But there's pretty high confidence we're gonna get that. Um, if not, then not, like, we'll, we'll beg and fight and do what we need to do. But if, for whatever distant reason, we have to. Think about things, the option then if we don't have that disadvantaged status is then they punt us back to a twenty year long term. Which is unfeasible with the way we are wastewater set up, so, um, you know, I. Want to at least put that bit of information out there that in this conversation. Um, if we cannot have that, that loan, then our contribution and the SRF proceeds is. Is very, very minimal. I mean, city has this to work with as long as we have that certified, which we're going to. But if we cannot, then we have to go into the USDA, which has been much more advantageous for us loan wise. Um, that's, that's me being fully transparent with you, that my closet is wide open for you to look at on that one. Not hiding anything, that's just the math as it's laid out, you guys know that we just passed those big. Great increases, thankfully, the council blessed that, but that's, that's where we're at as a city position. And I think overall, we, we love to partner, we love to get together on this water quality project and. Make sure that we have everything together and have a, a good amenity for our area, uh, city. Uh, to be able to go to, uh, trails has certainly been a conversation of the council the last month. And outdoor recreation is certainly fits a lot of, a lot of those needs for, for us and I, for you too. So, that's kinda where we are starting out with here.
Yeah, I guess on the early stages here, I mean, we talked about budgeting, of course, and we talked about financing and where it might come from, or where, where. Um. I guess I'd almost have to see some, you know, where, where we're funding or scenario of the percentages. Of what, how they might play out.
Yes.
A cost each entity, if you wanna be it, you know.
Right.
You know.
I brought my computer for that very reason, so let's, let's cover some ground together today.
Alright.
And, um. Just looking at what's required of that grant. Forty percent if you're awarded will come from this, this pool. So, they asked, um, in our first conversation, what's your project total looking at? A few four million dollars out there. Didn't know what is out there for options or what was sold on, but that's, that's the number I used. Um, I've been telling people that our wastewater project will cost fifteen million. Uh, right now, we're at about thirteen point six, according to the engineers. So, if you throw in a fourteen million dollar loan. Ten percent of that gets to go towards water quality projects, so you know from us that maximum, you could throw a one point four at it from our end. Towards that pond, that. This, I think, the first spreadsheet that Larry has or offered away, most of that is tied to that Tenerife Lake. Uh, and that excavation, that dirt moving. You build those things that.
There's one that's three point five million, right?
The one I have here, uh, was one point two seven six, this is an earlier version, I think, relating mostly to the catch basin.
That's the catch basin, yeah, the Prairie Creek Park one is.
Okay, I, I do not. So continuing that conversation, if it was four million total, you have to come up with two point four. For local match for this grant application. Take one point four out of that, county's. Uh, the number is one.
And I see in the paper that we can use our funds for that.
I understand, that's one of the slides I saw on the webinar, defer to date too, but I, I agree with some confidence that that's allowable. One of the funny. There was a, there was an update to that ARPA resource on January twenty seventh that allows that ARPA funding to be used. As local match for programs, that wasn't the case beforehand. Um, I've proven successful with that with the EDA, so I, I would imagine that that would be the case here.
I just noticed in their ranking criteria, one of the questions that they're asking is, is any ARPA. That's true, yeah, so we know it can be used, right, I just don't know if that. Is a positive or a negative.
Right.
As it relates to scoring.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, sources for financing on page eight is where it lists the different public funding, so you're having private fundraising. Grants, your commission plan. Yes, we have. Four hundred thousand.
Depends on what you do with first grade. That's where you.
Well, we talked about the wall, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I can go back.
Part of that, I thought four hundred thousand went to Prairie Creek and three fifty went to the law.
I, I don't know that we allocated anything.
We were just talking about different projects and, and funding and trying to decide how we would split up the money that we have.
Right, I mean, we just.
No, nothing was determined or finalized.
I mean, we're basically sitting on this, a jail project that hasn't started yet, that we. Yeah, we, we, you know, basically tag, you're tagged. A fair amount of that, you know. To get this override that we have. On the project, so when, when I hear these numbers, I mean, of course, we have a budget at any time either. And if you would, Josh, run them past me again, kind of, so you said that, that. You, you just estimated the project at four.
Yeah.
And you said the max would be for the city, you thought one point four.
Yeah.
And then as a scenario, the, the two point four, that, yeah, two point. Six, that's like, you said two point four.
Two point four represents sixty percent, which is required of the application to show that the money is allocated and accounted for. On that two point four, one point four comes from the city via the loan proceeds. So that would. Put the carry out on those.
That's what I have wrote down.
So this would be the Prairie Creek tampering cost estimate, this was just updated about two weeks ago. For current prices.
But this really doesn't include that though, correct?
It could, yes. So you might have to pull things out to get into a more comfortable spot.
So if you put all of this in, which is three point five.
But the application's starting date to, to apply is the fifth.
For the forty percent match.
Okay.
So that's, that's kind of the key, the forty percent, that's probably a one time shot. I don't know if we could use. Uh, reef money, a grant for that, no, we had talked about that. Laura, do you know, is that what's over, or missed together with this?
So the county gets their own reef, or are you talking about a reef application?
For the county, or maybe conservation could. I don't know.
I'm not, I, I mean, I'm familiar with the competitive rounds of reef where you apply for a specific question, but if the county gets their. Us, another separate allocation, I'm not sure what the limitations or restrictions, but I would. Have to believe that redevelopment of a part of Prairie Creek would certainly fit into natural resources and. So that would be an option, but that'd be something to clarify. Did, is there a trail that's a part of this too? Like, I heard somebody mention trail, but.
There would be some additional trails around the lake, I think, there's a camp, or not a campground, but a. Parking on the beach, that is, we tie in with the trails, existing trails.
So just last week, the RPA has decided that they're taking applications for new trail product. For trail projects.
Mm-hmm.
And the deadline is June second, or two, early June, I'm not sure the exact date, but. And any project could get up to two hundred and fifty thousand, I, again, I haven't seen. I don't know what your numbers are, and you're kept to have some local match on that too, but. If trails are a part of that three point five or four million dollar thing, that might be another thing to look at. A- as far as an application for. Additional funding.
And another potential for trail is that's one of the, the university of Iowa students, they've put a trail at the Lankins. And so that is something, when I heard that, I thought. Maybe that would stimulate some product, uh, some direction out at the Lankins if they could apply for some grants for a. Trail out there, because that was one of the things that they have put into the design.
Sure, now I know that there's any uh restriction on number of applications that are submitted on any jurisdiction, but. Um, the line. Films is, is that county owned, or is that?
It's county owned.
Okay. And.
Jackson County Historical Society.
Is that different than, I mean, when I think of county, I don't think of the historical society, are, are they?
Well, we certainly support it.
I think they're their own entity, as far as that.
But conservation knows it, so.
Conservation Board owns, mows it, yes, and.
By Conservation Board owns Prairie Creek.
Yes, they do.
That's, that's my thought process here is that we're, we're diving into this or somewhat diving into this, and I can't swim, by the way. But conservation certainly needs to be a part of this conversation about where they were going, I mean, they were. Applying for grants at that time for Prairie Creek also.
That, I think they're looking at a cat grant at one point to, to try to, um, move that project forward, but. I don't know that you're gonna get a cat grant and, and Destination Iowa, and by the time you go through the cat process. This money's gonna be used up, so you need to act more quickly on that, but. Speaking of timelines though, Josh, back to your comment about the RSF funding. When will you have an answer on, if that's the direction?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, backing up a week and a half, two ago, um. I explained why I was interested in turning around, right, uh, they responded, so. Um, WH cast said the same thing. It's a fair question.
There's gonna be that commitment, because when, when I look at what the application is looking for, they want to know that. It's not possibly that the city might be playing in my, they wanna have. All of the local money committed.
Yeah.
Um. Before they're going to make an award, they wanna be the last, yeah, to make the project move forward.
I think the best version of this, um, in our minds is our next council meeting is May sixteenth. And having a council back commitment in some sort of agreement. And then filing the application that week. Just to catch up to folks.
I guess, yeah, I, I, it's, it's gonna be hard for me to commit to. A million dollars that we didn't have budgeted or, or where is it gonna come from? Our commit.
Well, if we don't use. Our money, and that's why I called Heidi, because originally when we were looking at this park, we're gonna take out a loan for it. And we can, this price includes all of the four cabins, the whole thing is completely, that's. A pull up, and that'll bring in over two hundred thousand here, and our loan would be about a hundred and thirty. If we were on two million, so I feel we're gonna be below that somewhere.
Well, I think probably what we need to do is have the conservation board, us and the city. Get together, sit down and look at really what the funding needs to be.
Mm-hmm.
How much each, each entity has to participate financially and see what direction we wanna go. Because right now, there's, I mean. Back when it was first proposed, there was a lot of controversy about the whole process. And so I think that we need to make sure we have our ducks in the row.
Yeah, no doubt, because at that time, we had a different conservation director also, and he was a hundred. Fifty percent on board, and I'm not so sure the new director. Is completely on board from my conversation, so, I mean, I need to have input here from all sides. I mean, I, I gotta have conservation, if, if that's a conservation project, I gotta have them completely on board, and I don't know if you guys talked about. In your conservation meetings, or when's your next meeting? You just had one in. You know, that's the problem with the whole thing here, I mean, we either have to have special meetings and get together and have a sit down, because. We can't wait for a council meeting, we can't wait for our next meeting, your next meeting, the, things are gone by, the timeframe is gone.
You know, I, I just think that we need to try to get something put together as soon as possible.
Larry, what was the cost of the park estimate, three point five one?
Is that a new one that I have not seen, I haven't seen?
Oh, three point five one.
That includes the cabins?
That includes four cabins, four cabin.
Four, and this is the, this, okay, so this is the same design project that we had before from WH gap. Okay, but, but this is, this part of the project is new, correct?
That's correct.
Yep, yep.
But it's included in that.
Number, no.
Larry, is that excavating and that water, is that in that? In that bit, that's, this is on top of that.
Come by, yeah. That one was. That number escalate to X amount of dollars and, again, still we got. What is the total funding required from each entity, if that's what it may be? Or what will the loan actually be? Pretty quick, it's too easy enough to have a retention project, maybe and have partially funded, but then. To build a five million, four million, three million dollar campground. Yeah, another project in itself.
Well, this, this portion here, the Prairie Creek Pond and Dam restoration, that alone is two, one point two million.
So those two together, four point four eight.
Three point five plus one point two should be four point seven.
One point two seven six.
Yeah, plus three point five one five.
Is how much? Four point seven?
Four seven, almost four eight.
Oh, I got four point four eight.
Yeah, we're just looking at a four point eight million dollar project with those two figures.
Yeah, and there's on this. The mill pond one, he's also showing four areas for water retention. Now, those are already in there, that was, um, four or five years ago. I don't think you realize that, and I'm not sure if that here. I would take that as a part of this bit, so that would be, take some.
Well, Josh, tell me this, how much conversation have you had with city council? I mean, just briefly, or all, any conversation, one once, there's widespread interest in this.
One once, there's widespread interest in this. I think that's.
I mean, we're, with, with what we have going on, we're talking substantial numbers. Yeah, so does this require also, uh, if, if the loan process, does that require a vote?
Eighty percent, no, it's not a vote. Are you doing internal?
Well, I can't remember, to be honest, Dave, it's been about two years since we talked about that Prairie Creek project, and I don't remember. How Daryl had that structure or the last director had that structure. Of where we were going with that.
So take the four point seven. Okay, take forty percent off of that and there one point four, then what do we have?
Josh, you got your.
Okay, what, what are we taking for forty percent? First taking forty percent off because of.
Grant.
The destination, correct?
Four seven?
So if you take four seven nine one thirty two. Four seven nine one zero thirty two. Times forty percent. And then minus one point four.
Point six, right? Because we're talking local share here.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's one million four seven four thousand. And then take what your grant was, or the?
No, we already took that off.
That's, that's. So, so the balance would be, was that again, one point four, one point four? Three million dollar range, you're looking at four hundred thousand dollar county or other commitment. So that's kind of the scale.
Well, certainly I need to look at where we could come up with. A portion of it and or loan portion of it. You know, I mean, it, it's, it's a large project. And we got time picking this in.
I think they decided this way too. Yeah, and that's it, that whole very great bit, I mean, it's, we could send it out for bits right away. It's already built. And that's part of that shovel ready, and we own the property, which is not a great thing. Forty percent is a nice type of change, so.
Okay, so I agree that there is some possibilities here, but again, we gotta have all parties involved.
We have to get everybody. Together and discuss what's. What direction we wanna go.
Soon can we do that when, where, how? To me, Nathan, our director should have been here probably maybe for this conversation, I don't. It's a conservation project, basically, it's their baby when it's done, you know, we gotta hire personnel, we've got. We've gotta maintain it, we have to. I think it's a huge asset from a coconut, I really do. But is it feasible generally? Can we do it physically?
Rather than do the whole project at once, including the cabins, maybe think about maybe trying to do this in phases.
Well, that's what we talked about that many times, but does, okay, we're including numbers here for the grant though. So does that, that, does that, is that an option? To do that in phases, we come up with X amount of dollars. We already said, I mean, your next phase, you might not get any. No, but we already said we'd commit X amount of dollars, if that's the case, if we're gonna apply for it, we would committed that. So then it's not another phase, it's, it's, it's.
I realize it's all in one, but it sounds like this is kind of getting off the rails a little. On what exactly we wanna do here. We're up against the clock. From Monday. And. You know, maybe we should, as a group, come up with a hard goal of what it is exactly we wanna do. And then of course get conservation involved, and it's like, it's gonna be there, there may be when it's all said and done.
Just, just one comment on the phase. Thing, um. That's from everything I've learned in this grant, that's not what they're looking for overall, they're looking for big hits. Yeah, attractions. True recreation, I mean, that you've talked to folks about Macocada. Caves and this visitor drop, but it's a four hour trip. What else is there to do in the area? And that's what they're looking for out of this grant.
The cabins also are gonna be a source of revenue that's gonna really generate potential returns to conservation or the county on this project, so. You know, you're gonna, and, and again, I'm not saying, I mean, when we looked at Prairie Creek, we said, okay. The first phase of Prairie Creek was stuff we were doing with parks and people, we knew we couldn't do all of Prairie Creek and parks and people. For a timeline and the money. So whatever. Assuming you move forward here, this would be phase two of, of the project now. If phase two doesn't include cabins or, or some element that we're talking about here. Take it out, but we don't go to them and say, well, we're looking at a multi phased project. They wanna know, what are you looking at today? What is the project you're looking at? The fact that you might do some things later to further enhance it. Is not gonna be factored into this application, and Josh is right, they're looking for big hits.
And we did run the numbers, Jim England and I sat down. After our discussion, let's do part of it first. So when we took. Two cabins out and we took four cabins out. And we ran the numbers. And every time we take cabins out, the loan gets longer and longer because of the infrastructure department. And finally said, well, what happens if you put the twelve cabins? And the poor cabins that pay off is like fifteen years, I think, and. If you put twelve cabins and it goes down to seven years. It just shortens the note up that much by half.
That's still a projection. Yeah, I mean, you can put the cabins in, but you gotta put somebody in them also to make that work. But I mean, you can't just put a cabins up and say they're all gonna be rented. Seventy percent of the time, I, that's a projection.
It is, but we take a look at how their areas, I think, lot of my meeting and. Particularly since COVID, they're exceeding those.
So when, uh, may I ask Larry, where these numbers come from and when? I don't see a date on here either.
Last Tuesday, I had a transformation meeting. He brought these numbers.
Who brought these?
Um, Alex. So.
The WHKS was not involved in, in these numbers, is that correct?
No. Assistant county attorney. They drew the plans up and had the numbers. What, four years ago, somewhere in there. Which is probably double. Too much. I mean, it's gone up on. Well, not doubled, it went from, I think, two point five up to three point, so it's added another million dollars from last four, five years. Would you guys? Do you guys allow me about few days here to the end of the week, maybe early next week? To put together summary on this, build out a couple of cost options, what is our head, what I'm hearing here? Put together the numbers. So that we're not having kind of a verbal here, someone comes into it, read. Analyze, is thinking about their financial position going into a meeting.
I'd sooner like to see a better spreadsheet than this and this.
Is. You know, you wanna. Again, has our conservation director been?
Chance to talk to Nathan.
Yeah, conservation director?
Yeah.
I've not. I've, well, we, we had a conversation about it, that's why we came up with the new numbers. That was part of that conversation.
But Josh, when you're putting that together, I think it might be helpful to chat with Nathan, because if there are other funding sources that they have, particularly the reef funding. Was mentioned earlier.
Yeah.
Um, it'd be good to know what some of those options might be in addition to.
Correct.
Anything else we talked about today?
Yeah.
I don't know if they have any other capital.
Right.
Funding.
Yeah. I think in my mind, it just is at least painting a picture for Nathan to say, we can do this based on what we're saying here.
I mean, either the last time when this proposal come up, we were talking about a marketing, a marketing campaign and. In kind and. And who, who's gonna sponsor cabins? Do we have cabin sponsors, da, da, da? You know, it was a large, it was a marketing. Outgoing, we're gonna try and promote, you know, right, this is. We're getting choked, so tell me again, the ninth is the deadline for what? This is what it starts, correct? Okay, and we haven't done when to submit.
They say the earlier you get it in, the better your chances.
They've got a hundred million dollars, the ninth is when they start looking at um projects. And they're gonna run it until December twenty third. Of this year. And if there's money left, they'll continue it, but they're just, they're gonna run it until it runs out of money. So. Earlier.
Ju- just as an example, I know of another. County in the area that has an eighty million dollar project that they're gonna be, they're not applying for eighty million. Cause they have to do sixty percent of their money too, but. They're applying for. A much bigger project, so I don't know how many of those are. Around the state.
Yeah.
But I suspect this money is, that money is not gonna last until December, I guess, my suspicion.
Oh, I agree.
I, I don't see them just throwing money at projects that are not, again, not. Ready or.
Oh, no, no, I mean, if you take a look at the criteria, there's a scoring thing, and out of a hundred points, you have to get at least seventy. To get. Funded, so even if you came in and had sixty five points in their scoring. They would not fund that application and project readiness is one of those. Areas where you get points or don't get points.
And then we certainly have to have all the players in on the meeting here. Is there anyone else since conservation that you're thinking of?
Well, you know, the trends of the conservation and I don't know who all is in on the reef part of it. Um, is, is the watershed even have a? Do they have anything to say about it? About as far as the project is water retention and.
I had a meeting this week.
I mean, support.
We don't have a lot of money.
I get it, but I mean, even be it.
Well, it's just like us being asked.
Support the project itself.
For the other project that we talked about.
Yeah, I've had a, had, last week, just one day, Congresswoman Ashley Henson's office called me and asked for. Letters of support regarding her wastewater project for three point five and. That's still a pie in the sky request, but we made one and did a quick tour duty to. Tons of community leaders, got signatures and sent it off to them. And I just wanna reiterate that there's a lot we can do pretty quickly, even though it is within some tight bounds here. Don't wanna get stuck on.
And I, I've gotta be honest here, I have not taken a hard enough look at this. To say even. Yeah, or nay, or. Had enough conversations with the groups, as to say, I mean.
But we need to have the conversations.
Yeah, I agree, I, I, I completely agree.
So you want to stop a meeting for tomorrow or such?
No, he said, no, he wants to, no.
Had till the end of the week. No, I mean, like you say, I mean, if it starts tonight, I mean, you're sure you're gonna have a, they will have a flood of applications if people are ready. We have no idea what they're gonna get for applications and how do you know, even if.
I know they're gonna be looking at it the week of May sixteenth, that was what she said on the phone to me.
That's quick.
You feel like a car salesman at the end of the month or anything? Deal, you deal those away.
Pressure on you, Josh. Right, but it's.
Yeah, no, you're, yeah, you know, the best way to work on that, though, is through transparency. At all times.
Absolutely.
That's the way I felt about it, um, I think that we need to paint a picture for, for everyone here, come together next week.
Yeah, I, I need a better spreadsheet or a scenario to say. This is how it potentially could work out.
Right.
This is the skin that everybody has in it, you know?
Yeah.
When is conservation, will, will met this month already?
Seventeenth. It's been tentatively scheduled.
Well, that's a problem with the whole scenario, like I said, do we have a council meeting then, we have a meeting every week and. Conservation has one every month and. Things don't move like we're wanting it to move.
Right.
Well, if we want to proceed, we, we will have to have a special meeting where everybody can be there. And.
Better, I don't want to put everybody in the same room at the same time.
That'd be good, but I think you do need to put some numbers together in some scenarios and he'll get potential funding sources before you bring everybody together so that. You can have some of these legitimate conversations.
Well, if we plan something for next Monday. Um. That would give you time to get. Your ducks in a row and it give us time to talk with Nathan and for us to discuss. What our potential might be and. Go from there.
Yeah, block out my hole next week, Monday and Tuesday, so.
Well, you have that option, maybe. I gotta ask the boss before I block things out, even if you have a black dog. Well, I like the idea you actually sitting down and put things together and you certainly need to have a conversation with Nathan.
Right.
Or with the director, um. What his thoughts, I know I have talked to him. It's been a while, you know, since this whole project, when he come on board. We were gonna make sure that he was on board with it and at that time, he was not a hundred percent on board.
So.
And just walking into position. Yeah, well, yeah, I agree, we had to give him some time, you don't throw something like that at him and, you know, when he's. Just breaking in, you know?
Right.
You seem to take that in stride, but some of us don't.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have much of a choice, so.
So do we wanna meet, um. Next Monday afternoon? Is there anything on our calendars for the ninth and afternoon?
My personal calendar is you're gonna have to do it early afternoon if it's next Monday. Or late morning. Actually, morning will be better, but. That's entirely actually.
I'm open.
Would Monday morning work for you, Josh?
Yeah. We're.
Well, why don't we try to schedule, talk to Nathan and make sure that he's available and we wanna meet at. Nine o'clock downstairs in our conference room.
Nine or ten or, I mean, don't have to be early, early, but it's.
Well, let's split it nine thirty. Have a joint work session at nine thirty next. Monday, the ninth. Have a motion to that effect. Sure. Second, motion in the second, hold a special. Work session on the ninth at nine thirty AM. Almost in favor, uh, hi, motion caring.
And did you say Jack, it was gonna be here in the community?
Yeah, we'll have it in the community room.
When do you need an agenda by?
We'll post it by Friday, so. Yeah, we need that twenty four hour notice, so.
Part of the afternoon.
No, by nine thirty, twenty four hours, yeah.
Is that gonna be? It'll work, possible, yeah.
But your Friday agenda is different than having all the other information together.
So it's true too.
Well, yeah, I mean, your agenda says discussion.
Nice, it's a work session, there's not gonna be any action item.
Hopefully the Sunday morning reading is the. Proposal.
Okay, we'll schedule that and um you wanna get ahold of Nathan and making sure that he's available? And any other interested parties that we.
I'll get some copies run of the whole, the full details that Mike wants to see those. Breakdown.
That would be great.
We have all the information that we could get and with, with percentages or whatnot.
Yeah, that's in there too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Josh, you were gonna touch base with director, right?
They, I'll, I'll find you some. Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you. It's clear this marriage starts. It's not the case of the Y M C A.
I guess there was a question I was gonna ask, what, when is, is your completion date? Into the grant funding?
Uh, it's our performance.
No, I'm talking. That Destination Iowa, a hundred million dollars, you mean? Yeah, I mean, one doesn't have to be completed or used, right?
Completely played a twenty twenty six. Because it's our fun backed, a hundred million dollars. So you have to start the project within the first year.
Okay.
Be a Dutch.
Thanks, Josh. Okay, next we have Terry rolling, come on up, Terry.
Gotta get you on camera.
Today, yeah, yeah.
Wanna stop in and say thanks for everything, thanks for all the races, appreciate it, yep.
Well, we just thank you for your dedication.
Yep.
And you're.
It was a good learning experience and. Yep, just an old dog can't keep up with electronics. Yeah, so.
Well, the world is a lot different than it was.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty five years ago and thirty two years ago.
Changed a lot, yeah. Yep, so. Well, we certainly appreciate your dedication to the course. I know at times it had to be rough. Different scenarios, different situations, be it whatever it may be, accidents.
Good times and mess.
Personal, personal problems, you know, issues, it's, it's all part of it, and it's very stressful, I would say.
Yep, what you learned every day, you know.
You certainly get to know people, don't you?
It was, yeah, you did, yeah, yeah, all the people, you know, and last couple weeks saying goodbye, and wow, you know, that was. Something what you grew, and even last summer school, we were now too, was was something. You know, got some real good friends there, so, yeah, but. Okay, I thank you again. Good luck.
We'll see you downstairs.
Okay, yep. Devil mother hero you were earlier.
Really?
I really enjoyed that. Yeah, I really looked up to those, you know, and then I got to be part of them, you know, that was. Yep, it was a good time, so, yeah, okay. Okay.
Oh, don't leave, sit down. I call back over, it is not the ninth, it's the sixteenth.
Yeah.
I also, Luanne.
Yes.
Look at our schedule for the sixteenth.
Oh, yeah, with the line on there.
It is our uh mental health uh governing board, all of the supervisors from all five counties. They're having a meeting that afternoon because we're going to be making a a change with the fund ten. Disappears as of July first, it doesn't exist, so all of the counties are having to. Transfer their money from our our treasury into the regional treasury, cause state is taking over mental health. So we're having a joint meeting with all the boards to finalize all of those things, that's in the afternoon. On.
On the six thirty that night.
Well, our governing board is in the afternoon.
Right, we have a meeting, Jack has a meeting at seven thirty for early childhood, at eleven o'clock is the groundbreaking for Together We Build. At one o'clock is tentatively waste authority for Mike, at three is regional governing board in Devonport for Jack.
Sorry, what time did you say for the waste?
Cat rip, one written, five o'clock is workforce board by Zoom for Jack, and six thirty is the all member counties meeting. And then maybe it's together we build that night, so it's a lot of meetings at night.
So you're seven thirty, you say seven thirty meeting in the morning, did Jack have?
Yes.
Is that in person, is that Zoom, is it, it's a Zoom, and how long?
Sometimes a half hour, sometimes forty five.
So if we're gonna do a morning and night and bring a sleeping bag, is is um something in the morning?
I'm just wondering if maybe we could. What's on the seventeenth? Our board meeting, obviously, is the seventeenth.
And then you have a meeting in Muscatina at two o'clock for workforce. And then intentional conservation board that night at six o'clock. Has to be a board of healthy to get seven.
So does this, the morning of the sixteen, before we launch over here?
Was there a seven thirty and then an eleven o'clock on the sixteenth?
Well, that starts the dinner over here together.
That's lunch.
Yeah.
Groundbreaking.
Well, you're, you are all invited to the dinner.
Yeah.
So.
Well, again.
Thirty groundbreaking?
Yeah, I mean, if John, John's gonna be here anyway, I'm sure he can be here by nine or nine thirty, whatever it is.
And your prisoners are up and dressed by then, so that they could.
I don't, I don't see it as being a two hour process, correct?
No.
Forty five minutes or whatever it might be, whatever.
You guys say more about them than I do, so.
You guys got ten o'clock groundbreaking, then you can just go over to the fairgrounds at eleven, so.
If we can get that arranged, then we have the day full and we're done. But that's, you know, that's here and there, do you guys agree to that or not?
And I'm assuming John brings the shovels and.
I have no idea what John does for it, but I think he does. I would just contact, we'll contact him and see if. Um, he could be here that morning and have the groundbreaking for the jail in the morning, and then have the together we build. In the afternoon.
No, at eleven.
Well, the groundbreaking is until afternoon.
Groundbreak don't start until twelve thirty, the ceremony.
I can check with John Henson, that's no problem.
I'll double check my planner, unless you guys want me to run across the screen, but now, but as far as I know, I don't think there's anything blocking. That day, cause I think I wrote in that that was two tended days that. Together we build wanted to do it, so I think. I could adjust.
Well, let's plan on that, if it changes, we'll have to change it.
Yeah, roughly ten o'clock that morning, we're thinking sixteen.
I would say under nine thirty to ten.
Okay. I'm from my side of the house, I guess I would assume I have for sure me and probably Andrew there. James available, I mean, if he's there, you make him down, I don't know if you need the shovel, I guess you just need to find after all, need the shovel, obviously, you guys and. Me and Andrew, so there's five, if there's any other community leaders or anything that you want. As well.
I don't know who else would be a bean.
Other goal.
Okay, we'll plan on that.
Okay.
We'll get ahold of John and tell him he has to come early. And do both of them in the same day.
Okay.
Your new deputy should be able to take care of almost anybody, big guy.
I hope so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, he's got good stature and coming from conservation, you know, he's got good people skills. And you don't generally get guys that are, you know, over the top, coming out of that, you know, arena, working, burning, so. Are we done with our meeting?
Uh, we have a recess, so whenever you're ready to recess, we're we're done.
During the meeting.
During the meeting?
Yeah, oh, yeah, during the meeting.
I'd make most good here.
I would second. Motion and a second to ensure all those in favor, I, I, motion carrying.